I call our meeting to order. And first off, we ask everyone to please mute their cell phones or turn them on jiggle or whatever you're comfortable with. We will call to order the Lander County Commissioners Meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin Board of County Highway Commissioners for May 9th, 2019. Mr. Clark, would you be kind enough to lead us in our silent quiet this morning?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And a warm welcome to everyone of my commissioners and our staff and our guests and our citizens. And if you'll join us all in just a moment of silence, please. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12 noon to 1:15 p.m. Any agenda item made taken out of order may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. We begin with our commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Judy, can we start with you this morning?
Certainly. Okay, so on the 26th of April, I attended the NACO conference. One thing I want to bring up, and this is for fellow commissioners also, is the National NACO Conference this year is going to be in Las Vegas, July 12 through the 15th. There is going to be a NACO Dinner sponsored by NACO and NV Energy for Nevada Commissioners only. That will be held Sunday, July 14th, but they would like an RSVP. So then on Monday, the 29th, I attended a sage grouse ecosystem program meeting in Reno. One of the things they had on the agenda was a notice of intent to act upon regulation adoption of proposed temporary mitigation regulations regarding the sage grouses. They did adopt those regulations. NACO had suggested amendments. They voted to approve the amendments. So this was submitted. It is a temporary regulation. It can't be submitted to the legislature until July 1st, and they have 30 days to act on it. But if nothing is acted on, it expires on November 1st. So if anyone'd like a copy of it, I can get a copy of that. It's kind of basic.
No, I'm sorry, is that the regular sage grouse or the bike state?
You know...
It's a regular, I think, isn't it?
I honestly don't know what the difference is, so I can't...
Okay.
But one of the other things that was really interesting that came out of the meeting is this panel is, board is made up of all sorts of different entities. You know, you have the BLM, you have Endo, you've got Forest Service. So there was a presentation by the Forest Service and also BLM, speaking about the fires north, the Sugarloaf and the Martin Fire. Actually, the BLM received a substantial amount for reseeding for the Martin Fire. The Forest Service had requested like 1.9 million. They call it BEAR, which is an acronym for, you know, that's kind of their rehab. The federal government gave them nothing. And I just, I was just appalled at that. They just, absolutely nothing for reseeding. They gave them, I believe, $85,000 for structure rehab, going in and fixing culverts, things like that. But as far as any range land, absolutely nothing. They did get some donations from private entities, but the BLM, they did, they have some of their own seeding in stock and on surplus. So they're able to seed quite a bit of it. So that's it.
Thank you.
The hospital board, it was fairly straightforward. They're working on budgets just like everyone else, and they're, they're still under construction in the clinic. If you go into the clinic and try to get to the hospital, it's amazing to try to get through there. The stuff that they have finished is beautiful, some of the offices, you know, the new offices and things that they have created. So, but they're still under construction, so other than budget and finishing up the construction, there's not a lot going on there. So...
Thank you.
I'll report.
Okay. On April 26th, I did attend the NACO meeting. Of course, they gave us an update and a checklist on all the different things going on at the Nevada Legislature and all the things that they are busy representing us on behalf of all the counties. On the greater sage grouse, I think that's the one that was having all the meetings. That's the one that is chaired by JJ Goachia, our commissioner.
Six western states.
But we are in a comment period, actually, for the bike state one, and that's with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And NACO is submitting comments on that, the rationale for not listing it. And the interesting thing is, is they're really working on what they call the disturbance cap, because they have a cap on there that seems to be so high. You could disturb it if you walked anywhere close to them. And so therefore, everything disturbs them. And it's like, wait a minute, this, and actually, in reality, it really doesn't. I mean, they aren't disturbed. They're apparently, you know, used to a lot of different kinds of noises and things. So we're working on that, and hopefully that'll change a little bit to get that under. The other thing is the PILT, which is the payment of lieu of taxes, of course. Right now, there is support for the federal legislation to actually consider a change in the PILT formula. And what it would do would give additional funds to smaller counties with 5,000 or less, but it doesn't change any of the amounts anyone else is getting. So there would be adding to it a little bit. And we're in support of that, so we'll see how that one comes out federally. On the 30th, I did attend the school board, the biggest thing that they were considering, of course. They had decided to go from a seven-person board to a five-person board, but they were considering how they were going to do that, whether they're going to do it in districts or just general, who would be represented and such. So they did decide, and currently, they're right now making a district north of the 40th parallel for the southern area, and in general for the rest, but that will be finished and come before us to look at at another time. And the other thing I have is actually going to be on the agenda, so we'll move directly into our staff reports, meetings, conferences, and any seminars attended.
Okay, so I did attend our appeal at the tax board meeting. It turned into a rather lengthy discussion between myself, our tax board person, and the tax board itself. The bottom line, or in a nutshell, what it is, is the tax board thinks that if we lose our waiver, that we can reapply. The Department of Taxation says, no, you can't. So what it's come down to is they're going to get an attorney general opinion if we can reapply or not. What I got out of it is if we're not allowed to reapply, then they will reverse their decision and we'll get our waiver back. If we are allowed to reapply to get our SECRT tax waiver, if we're allowed to reapply, then they'll probably take it away for the year. So last year, we were entitled to $5.6 million. We collected $2.3 million, and the balance of that $5.6 million actually goes into a pot that benefits other counties in the state that have this waiver in place as well. So we are a benefit to the state, and they recognize that. But once we get the decision back, the legal opinion back from the Attorney General's office, we'll go to another meeting. It'll be discussed, and I'll have a final update on whether we keep it or not. So that's where we're at there. Also, the Senate Bill 48, which is the Rural Diesel Tax Bill, there seems to be confusion with it. It was supported by the county because it gives the authority back to the county in order for the board to decide if we're going to raise taxes to do with diesel fuel. There was an earlier bill that would have left it with the state, and you know how that could go? The state's just going to dictate. That died. So it looks like Senate Bill 49, or I'm sorry, 48, will pass. It's going to be voted on next week, and that'll put the authority back into the commissioners to decide as far as any increase in tax, diesel tax. Probably one of the hotter subjects right now is mosquitoes in the county. I've had several discussions with Robin Gray, our mosquito person, and what it's come down to is he is going to start spraying, aerial spraying. We discussed fog spraying, ground type spraying, so forth. He's going to start spraying Friday in Battle Mountain, Saturday and Sunday. So he'll do aerial spraying out in the flats and come through town. He is going to post notices in town that says he's doing this, and Patty's here for the paper. We'll put in the paper that we continue to work to get the mosquito problem and the nap problem taken care of. So if there's any questions on mosquitoes, feel free to refer them to me, or that's where we're at. We're going to really start getting pretty hard. We do have two items we need to discuss in a closed session after the meeting to do with the union contract, and then where we're at with the levy and the Army Corps of Engineers. We do have, we have hired a county health nurse, Brandy Bingoa, and she'll start early June to be our county health nurse. So we're real happy about that. Karina Cortez, back here, is new to the administration office. She's the administrative secretary to me. So welcome, welcome to her as well as Brandy. And I wanted to touch a little bit on what Commissioner Allen said about the FMAG money, which is the Fire Management Assistant Grant Program. And it's true, they did not give them any type of reimbursement, but they are appealing, it is my understanding. So it is a process to appeal it, and they might end up getting some money out of that to help with rehab in the open areas. And other than that, everything else, I think we're going to talk about. Oh, I have the resolutions here that I'd like everybody to sign. This one here is on nice paper, which will be signed, and then we're going to frame it and mount it. And then the white paper one is one that will be recorded and filed. I did get your call yesterday. Washoe County is very interested in this resolution that this board approved.
Did you, did you send it to me?
No, I wanted it to get signed. As soon as it gets signed, it'll get sent. And then there's, it has changes that the commission directed to have put in. So once this is done, I'll get this scanned and sent to Washoe, and it might be on their agenda soon.
I signed the wrong piece. Make another one. I'm going, look at all these commissioners' signatures. I didn't do it on the bad one. I need the good one.
That's all right.
Thank you. Yeah, I did.
You voted eight, right?
I'm on your page.
You already signed?
Oh, and I signed this piece.
Yeah, and then you'll have to do the chair.
Oh, I have to sign this one. Oh, great. Thank you. Do I have to sign that one again, then?
Yeah, you'll have to sign this, the chair.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. This time is for non-agendized items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in arriving and/or attend and make comments on any non-agenda item at the board meeting, if any, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Moving on to our consent agenda, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine. They may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners who are going to action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request an amendment be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. Number one, approval of May 9th, 2019 Agenda Notice. Number two, approval of March 18th through 19th, 2019 Special Meeting Budget Workshop Minutes. Number three, approval of March 28th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Number four, approval of April 1st, 2019 Special Meeting Budget Workshop Minutes. Number five, approval of April 11th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Number six, approval of April 25th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. And number seven, approval of the payment of bills. And we have not received any of our minutes. I hope they come in soon, because it's going to take us a long time to go over all of these. So with this one, we will pull everything, actually, except the agenda, because I do need to pull number seven, the approval of payment of bills, and we'll act on that separately.
Make motion to approve the Agenda Notice of May 9th, 2019.
Second. Thank you. Motion made by Kathy, seconded, motion made by Judy, seconded by Kathy. Any other discussion, public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, number seven, we need to pull out check number 202970.
There's a check made to my board.
Thank you, for Commissioner Sparks. And so we'll have a motion to approve all of the other payment of bills?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Kathy and seconded by Judy. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And that passes. Okay, the next motion we need is for approval of check number 202970.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Judy, seconded by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Thank you. It's so noted that Commissioner Sparks is refusing. Any other discussion, public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, number one on the agenda, commissioners, discussion and possible action to approve or disapprove use of the Battle Mountain Motocross Track to host the final round of the 2019 I-80 Challenge Series on August 24th, 2019, for Robert Di Mars and all other matters properly related there, too. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for considering this. Robert Di Mars, for the record, and I represent Gold Rush MX Park and the I-80 Challenge. It's a series that I created, and it started last year. If you're wondering why I'm here, last year, Lander County, y'all had a club at the Battle Mountain racetrack, and we did have the final round in Battle Mountain of the I-80 Challenge 2018. When that happened, just went to the club members and basically brought my equipment over, my water truck, my dozer, and my things like that, and the whole club came here, and we had that final round. It was a night race. At that time, this didn't have to happen, because there was a club in place. And maybe it did have to happen, but I didn't know. So here it is now. I've created this series, and I hope you all have the flyer that...
We do.
Okay, so it's already start. Winamaka was round one. Goes to Wells, which I take my equipment to, and that's June 30th, and then it goes to Carlin, which is my track, and then it comes here, hopefully. But this series has already started. The flyer's out there, and I got word less than a month ago that the club and the contract had been demolished. So it was brought to my attention that I can't do that. I can't hold my final round at Battle Mountain. That's why I'm here, is to ask you permission to continue to... I can change that last date. I don't have a problem with that, but I'd rather just keep it the way it is.
Mr. Di Mars, you actually did answer one of my questions, that you do bring your own equipment in.
Yeah.
Is there quite a bit of maintenance that needs to be done on the track to get it in shape?
Yes, there is. So what I would ask is August 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, that's when I would start. And so basically, what happens is, of course, in the heat of the summer, those days are really hot, and so we go in, we rip the ground up a little bit with the dozer, and we water it, and it takes a lot of water. Those are one of my questions that's coming up here. But yeah, I do, there's about three days of prep to get ready for this, and then all day Saturday, of course. So there's four. And then Sunday, what we do is, after the race is all done, we typically get done on the night race at 10, 11 o'clock p.m., and then we'll go in the next morning and clean up things. So Sunday's a cleanup day.
So this is a question for Keith. Is that track locked, or is it part of, do you know?
So I haven't received anything from the dissolved board as far as gate or locks or access codes or anything. A letter was sent out to the past board chairman, Brandy Garner, and I'm guessing I'll hear from him soon and get keys or entrance codes or whatever we need.
Mr. Di Mars, my question is on the assurance, because I'm sure that you certainly carry it, so then Lander County would need to be named as an additional insured.
Yes.
If you can take care of that for us.
Yep, I do. One of the questions was, so I have, I brought the insurance that I carry. The city of Carlin is where the Gold Rush MX Park's located in. And when I started that in 2009, I took 80 acres and basically built this motorsports facility, and they did require the 24-hour day, 365-day insurance to cover, because it is in city limits. And so I've carried that insurance every year. And so like when we go to Wells, Wells is, I just take out a policy with the city of Wells, it cost me 500 bucks. This is a $5,000 a year policy that I carry for my own self. Winamaka, they've got Winamaka County that takes care of their insurance, and so we don't have to do that. And then, so when we came here last year, it was the county insurance, which Brian Garner said it's covered. I don't know the logistics and what happens with whatever happened. So I do have the insurance, and all I ask is that, so I have a $2 million aggregate and a $1 million each occurrence.
Okay, what you do, you contact your insurance company, tell them you're doing this series, and that Lander County wants to be named as an additional insured. That's all. And they send us out the paper.
I've already got the quote for the additional insured. It's 130 bucks to put Lander County on it. It's not the case.
It's just paperwork, usually, so...
It is. I'm already over that, but yeah, not a problem if this happens.
So out of curiosity, how many participants do you usually have?
So round one in Winamaka, we had 180 entries for a single day event. I'm going to say 20 to 30 campers will stay the night, so I don't know how that affects what's going to happen here. Do I, I mean, I don't, there's a lot of questions I have about the camping and things like that, but there, we did get a pretty decent turnout, and everybody likes the night races, because the Battle Mountain Race that we did last year, in 2017, I put on a race September 20th of 2017, and I was working in conjunction with Brian Garner to do that, and it was a night race, and everybody likes to race at night in the heat of the summer. So typically, we'll get a better turnout here.
Well, we got nice lights.
Yeah, yeah, you do. It's a nice facility. I hate to see what's happened to it.
I think what I've seen in the past, and I don't know as far as any, if there's ever been any question on regulations or whatnot, the same thing with the Stock Car Track, is, you know, they camp overnight. I don't know if they have bathroom facilities at the motocross track, or if you just get the porta-potties, but I think that usually the trailers come in and they'll just stay overnight. It's always seemed to be the case. I don't know as far as anybody's really ever asked what the legalities behind it were. I just, I don't think it's ever really been much of an issue.
As far as the restrooms go, last year at the I-80, it was a conflict with the Stock Car folks, Angie and them, I guess, because when the water tank is being filled at the Stock Car Track, the restrooms overfill or something. There's something going on there. So you have to shut the water off to the restrooms while you're filling the tank at the Stock Car Track.
Yeah, I don't think they, I think there's just not enough pressure to flush or do anything.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're working on getting the water on.
So what I did was I told Brian, I don't even want to use them. The portable restrooms that are there now, those are, I rented those. I put on a practice about two months ago, and I had no idea this was coming. And I don't know if any of you all seen that, but I brought a bunch of people over. We advertised it on our Facebook and our Instagram and everything, and I came over and I prepped the track, brought all my equipment over, and I rented the restrooms, and I had desert disposals, either garbages, and it's all mine. It's all mine out there. But that's beside the point, but as far as the restrooms go, I'd just rather leave the ones that are there, the permanent ones, I just don't even want to use them. I don't want the headache, so...
Well, we shouldn't have to close them anyway. But I do know that people come in and stay in some of the motels.
Oh, yeah.
I do know that, yeah. They aren't all just sleeping in their, in their trucks, yeah.
You know, back to that question was like, you get 180 entries, that's 180 single people. I mean, they've got moms or dads or sisters or brothers or friends. There's 500 people that went to Winamaka in one day.
Oh, no, I agree. I think it's... Well, I will make a motion that we approve the use of the Battle Mountain Motocross Track to host the final round of the 2019 I-80 Challenge Series on October 24th, and allow Mr. Di Mars' entry prior to the race to address the track, any issues regarding the track.
Where, can I interrupt?
Of course.
There's a lot of things, so do I, if this is approved today, who do I go to for questions on how do I get water? How do I, what about the EMT services? Is the county going to help me with that?
Everything goes directly through our county manager, and he will refer you to the people that are specialists in those areas.
I'll give you a call, or we can meet sometime and go with this real soon, and we'll get everything set up. What you need, okay?
All right. Cool, I'm sorry.
I'll second. Okay, Judy made the motion, Kathy made the second. Any other discussion by the board? Public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that does pass for you. And is any other legal issues we need to look at for condition?
No, we, I took care of those. I did have the letter that I had Keith send to notify the organization that since their organization is invalid, the contract has been breached and invalid, and, you know, things of those kinds. So, and that's all that we needed. You guys have taken care of the rest.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Di Mars, for bringing that to Battle Mountain.
Thank you, good luck.
I appreciate all your time.
Number two, discussion and possible action to approve or disapprove renewal of the contract between Lander County and the State of Nevada Department of Administration Public Works Division for the Nevada Highway Patrol lease of the office space located at 50 State Route 305, Battle Mountain, Nevada, and all other matters properly related there, too.
This is the annual renewal for the NHP office upstairs, and it's been reviewed in the DA's office, and there are no changes. This is the annual renewal for the NHP office upstairs and uh, it's been reviewed in the DA's office and there are no changes to it and.
No, there, there's one change.
One change is the length.
The, the length, exactly, they, they want five years.
Okay, so my other question is then, are we okay with the fair market value, they have a very small portion, I know, four hundred square feet, so we're okay with, with the amount?
Yeah?
Okay, because we do have to look at the fair market value, so I wanna be sure that one was okay. Okay, then I do have just a quick clarification, um, this comes in on September one, right?
Yes.
Okay. Let me look here, I have down, um, number twenty-four, I just wanted a clarification from our district attorney. It talks about prior termination and it's on page fifteen, actually. So, if something should happen that, heaven forbid, let's say, this building was hit by a tornado, we no longer have this building. Then that prior termination clause means we are not responsible of putting them up anywhere and it terminates. If we have something happen that's, we can no longer provide that rental space, is that? It's number twenty-four on page fifteen.
No, I've got it, I'm just, I'm just reading it.
Okay, thank you. I thought you were still looking, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that, that, that means that uh.
We have no liability if something should happen, that we no longer have that rental space available.
Right, if, if, if we don't have it available, then, then the lease is terminated.
Okay, thank you.
Without penalty, which is the important part.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the contract between Lander County and the State of Nevada, Nevada Department of Administration Public Works Division for the Nevada Highway Patrol for the space located at fifty State Route three oh five, Battle Mountain, Nevada.
One second.
Thank you, Judy made the motion, Brian seconded, any other discussion?
Do, who's?
Pardon? Passes needs to sign.
And approve, the chair to sign.
Second.
Thank you. Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, and that passes unanimously. Number three, discussion and possible action to approve or disapprove renewal of the contract between Lander County and the C C Communications for television service and maintenance in southern Lander County and all of the matters properly related there too.
This is a, once again, a renewal and as far as I know, they're doing us a real good job in the south. I, they jump right on any issues that come up and unless I'm not hearing that there's any problems, I, I think they're doing a good job for us.
Two-year contract.
Two-year renewal.
Yes, it is a two-year contract.
I know we had a lot of new things we had to catch up on, a lot of changes with the F C C incidentally, so um, I, we've been very pleased to do.
I'll make a motion, we renew the contract between Lander County and C C Communications for television service and maintenance in southern Lander County and all other matters properly related there too.
And authorize.
And authorize the chair to sign.
I will. Thank you, Kathy made the motion and Judy seconded that, any other discussion here? Any public comment? Austin, any public comment down there?
No.
No.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that passes unanimously, thank you. Number four, discussion and possible action to ask or appoint an individual or group to represent Lander County on October twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen for the annual statewide Nevada Day Parade and all of the matters properly related there too. And the invitation actually is in your book. There's a couple things that go with this, I had mentioned uh, on my report last time. The fact that Nevada Day will be having a celebration in theme of Nevada counties, one hundred years, so they asked all counties to take place, so that would be one thing if we would like to have an, uh, something being entered in the parade. And number two, Forrester sent a representative that might sit on the committee, so it's two different things here. So, uh, Keith, have you found out any information for us at all?
Well, I was waiting to see, uh, you know, of course, if the board wanted to do this or not. My plan is to get ahold of uh, Mr. Klein, Russ Klein, at the superintendent of the school, see if he might be interested in having uh, the school band be part of the parade. And then, like I say, once, once I know that it's supported by the commission, I'll look into some other things as well.
I guess, um, my concern is um, what else would we do, we could literally have a float or we could send some of our, our school band members, which would be a real experience for them too, I'm sure. So if they would do that and you could take a look at it and maybe uh, find out what the cost and what we're dealing with, cause we'd be overnighting and, and everything with the transportation and then come back, uh, but in the interim too, I'd like to see if we can set um, a person that would sit on the committee to help. But um, I think that's wonderful if we can do something and put it in the parade this year. So what are your thoughts?
I nominate Kathy to sit on.
Well, I'd have to be, figure out how often they meet before I put it.
That would depend on you, if you, if you're the head of the committee.
I'm not gonna be the head of the committee.
If you're appointed, you will be the head of the committee.
Appointed to be head of committee for Lander County?
Yes.
You just have lots of good ideas, Kathy.
Oh, yeah, nice.
Well, we all, so hey.
I don't mind doing that, cause I've done that kind of stuff at the schools before, um, I just, um, I would like to know what, what I'm jumping into first.
Okay, well, uh, if, if, if it is supported by the commission, I, I'll be happy to get, I didn't wanna go out and get a whole bunch of information. I didn't, I, there was, I didn't think you would not support it, but I didn't wanna go out and do a bunch of homework and you didn't support it. So if, if it's supported, I can give you a whole lot of information on what we can do.
Because our high school band is phenomenal and I think that um, they've done an excellent job and I wouldn't mind them representing us. But I wanna, like I said, I would like to know what I'm jumping into.
I, I think, I think the, the foreign person from the county, the, the one appointed and to you Kathy, I, I believe that you, they would give you the proper authorization to decide those or make those decisions.
Okay.
Because they haven't been made yet, unless you guys wanna make them right now.
Actually, I don't know why we couldn't have two, we could have someone sit on the committee and report back if Kathy didn't want to um, you go, go that far, because the first meeting is in Carson City, I know that, and it's the night before our inaugural meeting. So it would be fairly easy to sit on the committee and for, for Judy perhaps. And then um, we could also ask Paula for a convention of tourism too, you know, to do that or you could work with her, so.
Yeah, I'll try.
We don't have to say, you're it for absolutely everything, is what I'm saying.
So that's, that's fine with me, I mean, if, um, to do that would be fine, to work with her, just as long as I'm, like I said, they not, don't sell one.
No, no, I understand, it gets overwhelming too, so I thought, but we can do that, we can use two or three people or something, so. Um, is there any other public comment on this item? Okay, then let's uh, let's have, do some research and uh, talk with some other people and bring it back and we'll do some motions of what we'd like to do. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Do you want a motion to move forward on it, or do you s-
Don't need a motion to move forward, we know that, I mean, we'll do it.
Yeah, if it's coming back, we don't need a motion today.
Great.
If it's not coming back, it's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, the record will reflect our support, if everybody's okay with that, okay. Um, we're gonna go ahead and take a five-minute break, Austin?
Okay.
Quick five-minute break and we'll be right back. To order. And we left off at number five, discussion and possible action regarding speed limits in Lander County and all other matters properly related there too. And we had directed the, the DA to look forward to some things on us and uh, here we are.
Wanted to go over a few things, give you, you and I think.
Yeah, I asked for this to be back on. Because what I heard at our last meeting was totally unacceptable. I wouldn't have been able to sleep if we had twenty kids in jeopardy, morning and afternoon. So I asked Keith to take a ride out to the bus stop area. We went down Presidential and there's a bunch of dead end roads there and there's no speed limit signs on Presidential. Then we made the left on James Monroe and went down to the dead end and there's a turnaround. And as we did this, I realized this is a school district issue because these are students within the school debt and this needs to go to the, uh, to the school district. Doing a little research, I found out that back in the day, uh, when we first started to settle out in the hilltop area, Darren Chutell was the uh, bus driver, he was a coach and a teacher too. And he drove down to the end, to the turnaround and then back to James Monroe and Mrs. Broadway did the same thing. After I realized that it was school district related, we contacted, uh, I asked Bert or I asked Keith to contact the school district, contacted the school district, there are eight students in this area that sometimes, but seldom, use the bus stop. And the bus doesn't go down to the turnaround anymore because the kids don't use it most of the time. And there's eight kids, the five kids that are at the babysitter's house are driven to and from school. There's no race cars on that street anymore, I checked into that. And uh, you know, I've been out there fifteen of the last seventeen Christmas Eves and just, the twenty kids just didn't make sense to me. So, with this information, I don't know that there's a crisis there.
One of the things that I, I wanted to make clear and I, I did talk with Robin about it this morning, it was that the, the residence out there was referred to as a daycare and I just wanna make it clear that we did look into it and I did talk with Robin. It's not a daycare, so i- i- it's, it's just a place where uh, people drop, you wanna explain it, Robin?
Robin, you're for the record. It's where they drop the kids off in the morning to catch the bus, um, and then they go there after school. So she doesn't have them all day long, so it's not a daycare center. But between all of the families and not just the kids that go to school, there are twenty kids that live in that area.
Not according to the school district, Robin, we got a list of eight students.
Kids, not, they don't have to go to school, there's children out there and this is what we're worried about.
The school, the bus stop.
And we're worried, yeah, the bus stop does stop at the end, but it's not just the children that go to school that we're worried about. The little kids ride their bikes, you know, they play basketball, they, they're out, out and about. It's not just school children that we're worried about.
Preschool children.
Yes.
So if we do a study and we find out how many cars go up and down eighteen hundred, then we'll have a baseline.
Okay, and where you're saying that there's no race cars out there anymore, fell on a wave and was racing his car the other night up and down it.
Well, I didn't see it, I would suggest you get a video, because when I looked into it, I was told that he does not have any more race cars out there, he sold them in there in Winemucca, so.
They were racing the other night, so I will.
Get a video.
Figure out what I have to do.
Because that's not acceptable.
No, it's not.
But it, that's a wholly, that's a completely different issue, if that's going on, that's an enforceable thing, is it not, running a race car down the street?
It's not registered.
It's not.
Right, exactly, yeah, so.
But when you turn it in, they, they don't do nothing anyway, so this is why we're trying to get, just to get it lowered and get a sign up.
Thank you. So what's the pleasure of the board, how do you wanna continue with this?
Well, for, sorry, I'm sorry, for one, why can't we get um, speed limit signs out there to begin with, is to start with.
Okay, we gave the direction to the DA to look into it and see if we needed, if we could do any emergency signs, if it was a critical situation. Um, and then he's looking at the rest, so do you want um, our, our road and bridge people, public works to go up?
The actual speed limit is, shouldn't we have speed limit signs out there anyway, on the road?
No, not necessarily.
That's, no, that's, that's policy, I mean, if you guys decide.
Oh, I, I was always under the assumption when you had a road, you had a speed limit, so people would know what their, the.
Well, there, there, there's speed limit signs on some places.
The roads, unless it's marked, specifically marked, the roads in Lander County are fifty-five miles an hour, unless.
In that area.
Unless it's specifically marked. My opinion is that, I know I stated this the last meeting. I think that it's ridiculous to have certain zones, like certain areas like this, that people are allowed to go fifty-five miles an hour. You are in a residential area to some degree, why can't we change those speed limits? Why can't we post it? All we need is an ordinance to state which roads we want posted at a reasonable limit. Whether we do a study or not, it's for the safety of our citizens. How much is it really gonna cost, a few s- speed limit signs? It's ridiculous to let traffic on these roads like this at fifty-five miles an hour. And, and it's not just eighteen hundred, there were people in the audience before, afterwards saying, well, yeah, people go do paths down my road. Is it really asking that much to have an ordinance that limits the speed limits on certain roads?
No, that's why a speed study should be done, I agree with you.
Well, why do we even need to do this study?
Because that's what every, every responsible jurisdiction in this country does it that way. Everyone, they get a petition, they don't have one person come up and, and, and have agreements. They usually have petition with hundreds or thousands of people and, and based on that, they do a speed study and then change the ordinance, if the speed study recommends it, that's how, the process.
So I'm just curious.
Now, if you wanna do your own process, that's fine, but you're asking me how it's done
No, no.
And that's what my research indicates, I'm not trying to argue with you, Commissioner.
I'm not trying to argue with you either, counselor, um, is, okay, how, how do you go about doing a speed study, you sit there and watch traffic or?
Uh, Robert, please, the sheriff's office. For the um, lack of stick in my foot, my mouth, this, this, this really is bowling down to a public safety issue. And I think the sheriff's office would like to uh, kinda lead the charge on this and coordinate with some other offices in the county and come back to the commission with a, a recommendation.
Sounds good.
That sounds very good, thank you.
I would love it, thank you.
Thanks, Robert.
Ta-da.
I still don't know how you do a speed study though.
Department of Trans- Department of Transportation. They do them all the time.
They have an electronic car counter and then they, they have a couple different ways, they can actually have, they'll have people sit out there. We have them sitting at the, uh, out, by the out, or uh, the Baker View Brew there, that corner. They were out there two, two or three weeks ago, counting.
Well, I know that's, I know how you, you know, counting cars, but, but that doesn't tell you how fast those cars are going on that road.
They have, they have other, other devices.
Strip, they have a speed strip.
Oh, they do, oh, okay.
There's other devices that they can use.
Little rubber round.
Yeah, I thought that just counted them.
Well, they say that they can determine their speed too.
Oh, okay.
That's what the information that we read says.
Alright, well, that was, I was just kinda curious, I know you can count them, I didn't know how you could.
We're, we're just, we're relying on our, on, on our research and uh, until we got permission to call the Department of Transportation, I can't answer the specific questions.
So do we want a motion to request the sheriff's office to?
And Keith and I don't cooperate with them.
So we don't need any motion or anything?
No.
I, I don't think we need a motion, I, they volunteered to do it and so we're, we're certainly all in agreement to start there.
Right, and.
And it was put on the agenda, as Art points out. He asked to put it on because he had some information to provide.
Right. So we're okay with that and then, um, what kind of a timeframe do you think we're looking at before you report back to us? A month, two weeks? Somewhere in that? Okay, that would be great.
And I do have to comment. I mean, I understand that we put speed limits on these streets. It will give our deputies, you know, more responsibility to be patrolling that area and whatnot. But I, I just still believe it's, it's just reasonable to slow people down in residential areas. That's why it's twenty-five in town.
And, and that's another one of the problems, Judy, is that on our master plan, those don't consider residential areas.
I understand that. I, I know.
And that's the problem that we have to crack, to, to fix.
Right, yeah.
It's part of the fix.
But then I was told I live in a residential area, so in the middle of five hundred and fifty acres.
Yeah.
Any public co- comment on this issue? For the discussion? Okay, we'll move on to number six under building. And, uh, thank you to our Land and County finest for looking into that for us. It is a very concerning issue to all of us. Building number six. Update and information regarding the Austin Youth Center structural observation performed by Lostra Engineering, presented by Anna Pino, Land and County Building Official, and all the matters properly related there too. Good morning.
Good morning, Anna Pino with the Building Department.
Tom Hawkins with Lostra Engineering.
Morning, guys.
I'm, I'm sorry, you're, you're not the one that wrote the letter, right?
I am the one that wrote the letter.
Oh, you are the one that wrote the letter, okay.
Walked through the building, did the report. Yes, ma'am.
Thomas Hawkins. Okay, here, I got it.
Yep.
Thank you. I, I don't know why I was expecting another name on there. I guess Michael Austin was what I was looking for, but thank you.
We can drag him in here if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Well, I guess first off, I'm just, I'm gonna comment. I thought, um, the first thing was the safety issue, so, uh, we are handling that right in front, saying this is dangerous. We don't want anybody in there right now, right? So it is closed. You put a sign on the door, it's red tape. Oh, okay. So that's, that's the first thing and we need to address that. And the other thing is, um, I'm, I'm really concerned about, uh, your, your letter. So I guess my question is, I was looking for some other options and there didn't seem to be one. So, um, are you used to, first of all, let me ask how long you've been with Lostra Engineering?
I've been with Lostra Engineering for almost five years now.
Thank you.
I've been a structural engineer for over twenty years.
Thank you. Um, I know we've had some dealings, I think, with Michael's dad.
George.
I, I know prior to that. And, and he was so good about saving old buildings, things that you never ever thought could be saved. And he would step in and say, you know what? If we do this, this and this, we can actually, and we can do it for you. So I, I guess I, I was looking for something with another option somewhere and I'm going, how many old buildings have you actually been able to save yourself or recommended?
Uh, let's see. Fallon Courthouse, Fernley Train Depot, um, a number of historic houses and other structures as well. So I'm familiar with this state and its historic buildings. And these are different types of structures. Um, what you have here with the Austin Youth Center is probably the worst type of construction you can have. It's a rock pile wall. There's not a lot you can do with that.
Right. Of course, the, the big concern from the, the Austin residents has been, that's one of our pluses. It's probably the only thing Austin has is the fact that it's so old and people love to come see it. And so, um, my understanding for the citizens is that we just don't want to lose anything if there's any hope at all. And, and, um, and I'm, hopefully there's somebody in Austin that wants to address that. But, but first of all, let's discuss it with the commission. You read the letter, okay? And, um, so, uh, what are your feelings, first of all?
My, um, speak up first. I'm, I respect the fact that it's, uh, an old building, but I also respect the fact you get someone in there that gets hurt. Um, the life is more important.
Well, that's the safety issue first, yes.
Oh, that's the bottom line, is the safety issue. And if it's not structurally sound, it's not structurally sound. And it kind of, I don't know beyond that where you can go. The building is not structurally sound. And with the bell tower, the chance of that tower coming down and, you know, killing someone, it's just, uh, and I, like I said, I respect the fact that it's their building and they, it's old, but also the hu- the human life factor for me is going to come first.
That's my thoughts too.
Well, I, to clarify, it's not their building, it's the county's building.
Well, no, I know, but they, the, the use of it, to be able to utilize it, well, and it's not their building, but it's their building. You know, it's part of their history, so to speak there. Um, so, and I respect that, but it's, um.
So I have a question, a thought, is I think, I think we all understand that this building is, probably needs to be tore down. Unfortunately. Patsy, do you know what, when it was built?
I don't have the information handy. Um, maybe somebody in Austin knows, eighteen, eight, mid eighteen hundreds, early eighteen hundreds.
Early eighteen hundreds.
Cause the bell, the belt tower, the bell is actually the old, from the old fire department.
So here's, here's my thought. It's not a very big building, right? I, I know it's not an expense that we, you know, budgeted for, but I guess maybe thought process is, it's gonna have to come down. It is such a safety hazard. Can we rebuild a replica? You can still utilize the bell. I, I know that, that you're using it as a, at a youth center or were, which my understanding is, is, is that was just because that's, you know, the location and you don't really care where the youth center is. You want to save the building, but we can't save the building. But in the theme of Austin, would it be feasible to try and maybe build something of, uh, uh, an entire replica of it? It's not gonna have the history, it's not gonna have the anything, but it will still maintain the integrity of, of the town of Austin.
Well, it's certainly a consideration that we can all, you know, make is another option. Um, or you can update everything in the middle and just use the old facade and, you know, still do the bell tower and the structure and get that, you know, all.
Would that be feasible?
So.
The problem from top to bottom, um, the roof itself is completely gone. It's not salvageable. So the entire roof structure needs to be removed.
But I mean, if you just like, I mean, could almost like cut off the front and save it and, and, you know, redo the building in the back and everything and make it current and, and still somehow or other maintain the front.
Majority of the structure itself, the walls and the lateral resisting elements are rock pile. What they did is they basically took a bunch of rocks, morgue them together, stacked them on top of each other. Okay? It is literally the worst system you can have as far as a building goes. Not only from an age and deterioration standpoint, but also from a seismic standpoint. Okay? We are in a seismic area. You get a tremble, that building's coming down. It's, there's nothing you can, I know you're looking to try to rehab this.
No, 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 I'm not talking about rehab.
Make a, make a replica.
If you want to make a replica, that's fine. I would do it out of wood frame walls and do something that looks similar, cause.
Well, you can, a- and as far as the stacked rocks, I mean, there's forms that you can make walls that look like rocks and you paint them and they actually look like old rocks and, and whatnot, or even if you.
Fake stone veneer, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
You can, you can do something to that effect.
Or, or if there's even some of the rocks that are usable, that you could almost do a facade on the front as, you know.
Use part of the old building into the new. Well, they do it all around the world with all these, this old architecture. You go in and they actually pin it. This is the original and they build around it to restore some, you know, to acknowledge the history of the building.
Exactly.
Right.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
We just had a car show down in, in Austin. You're saying it's inevitable that the bell tower is gonna fall.
Correct.
Okay. Can you predict which way it's gonna fall? Because if we have a gathering there in Austin that falls on a sidewalk, we're in trouble.
Yes, you are. And no, I can't. I can predict it at some point in the future and most likely in the near future, it will come down.
Can you take the rock and reuse it to build a wall or is, isn't that?
If you wanted to do something with the rock and the facade, I'm sure that's something you can deal with. Um, the building's facade now, the majority of it is not rock. It's been plastered over. It doesn't look like rock. Um, there's various parts of it that are, um, siding, wood siding, siding that's deteriorated. How much of that you actually want to salvage, I don't know. But, you know, as far as the overall look, again, if you build this out of a normal stick built wood structure that meets code, it's gonna look very much like the original building.
Well, I think, I'm sure that, well, there's, there's gotta be pictures of, of the old building before it was, um, kind of refaced, like you said, stuccoed over or.
Well, it looks like it's been built in phases. I mean, the original building may have been. Somebody talking.
Just a minute, please.
The original building may have built, been built in the mid eighteen hundreds, but it has obviously gone through many changes over the years where it's been added on to and remodeled and cut and added on to some more and, I mean, this is.
And that's what they did.
Yeah, it, and it happens a lot with these old buildings. You get into them and, you know.
Thank you, sir. Um, I'll go ahead and open up for public comment. Do you have something you wanted to, uh, give the board?
Yes, this is Dee Helmy. I'm the treasurer of the youth board and we had a meeting the other night and we had a discussion about the youth center and our recommendations for it. And what the board had felt would be the best option was to preserve, is to preserve the facade, put it back to the original and yet we do have old pictures of it from the eighteen eighties and from about nineteen ten when the fire truck was coming out of it. And we would like to see the bell tower replaced and put back on where, and maybe actually make it so that it's a little easier to ring the bell or whatever instead of, you know, the issues they have now. And, uh, our other question is, if we're going to have to go through all of this, is there a recommendation of somewhere that we can store all the stuff temporarily until this is completed?
Store the stuff in regards to what stuff?
The pool table, the foosball tables, the TVs, the, um, everything that's inside the youth center currently.
I would say because you're a private organization, that would have to be something that your organization would have to figure out.
Oh, even though we're using a county building?
Yeah. Could yours, go ahead. Keith, Weston, what's on to say?
I was just gonna say, uh, last year it was made pretty clear they needed to get their 501(c)(3) in place and then we could work with them more. And I don't know, Dee, did you ever get your c- 501(c)(3) in place?
No, because there's been too many issues over the whole thing and it's a volunteer thing.
Okay. So, so we, we have, we don't have that option to really, as a county?
Okay, so if we move out of the building, then does that mean we're not gonna be able to move back in?
Not, may I, or, not, not until the building is deemed, uh, safe for entry, which would be, sounds like a rebuild or reconstruct.
Right.
That's why.
If, um, after you finish the building, is the youth center gonna be able to, the youth center board going to be able to utilize it again? Or what's going to be the status?
Well, you, you would have, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, as long as it's being used as a youth center and we'd like, like, um, and there's, uh, cause I know there's not a ton of children in, in Austin right now, so is it actually being used as a youth center or is it used as a, uh, commonplace of meeting for different things going on within the community?
No, we use it for the youth center. We use it for birthday parties. We've done baby showers, but really that's about it. It's most of the stuff that goes on there is youth oriented.
Well, okay. So Dee, this is Judy.
Yes.
Um. Square footage wise, would you use the entire building?
We do currently, yes. We have a pool table, two foosball tables, uh, an air hockey table. We have, and then in the back room where the kitchen is, we have, uh, couches and a big TV and we do movies and movie nights and stuff back there in the back. And the front area is set up, we had a Wii and, you know, different video games that hooked into the TVs. And then there was an area where we did art and then we had computer desks also.
Okay, thank you.
So is there somewhere else within the community that can be utilized as a, um, youth center? Because how many, how much money is this going to cost to do this project for this building to be used as a, as a youth center? Or can be utilized somewhere else?
Building in a historic district should be your number one priority, not what's gonna happen with the youth center.
It, it is, but the double side is that the amount of money that it's going to be to fix it, the youth center has absolutely nothing to do with it when the youth center can be moved to a different building.
Recommendation?
The school?
I'm Kurt Franklin from Austin. Uh, I know that some things in the past maybe got a little loosey-goosey down here. But going forward, I think the youth center needs to, uh, form a, uh, a legal 501(c).
Yes.
Couple other items is that the, uh, uh, clearly it's, uh, if you need storage, could the county be kind enough to let us use the, uh, Gridley Store, which is currently laying empty to store the youth center gear in? If there's still needed more room, uh, they perhaps could ask the Historical Society, which leases the barn. Uh, we have, uh, currently the volunteer fire department have two old fire engines there and there's an empty bay in that barn. I think that if the Historical Society is kind enough to let the volunteer fire department borrow those two bays, they could certainly for a temporary, uh, for a year or so until we figure out the new home or a home, uh, let the, uh, youth center store some gear there. Uh, I understand that the county is, uh, thinking about building a new, uh, uh, fire building for us at the old county road and bridge yard and, uh, uh, if that's the case, then the, uh, old current firehouse would be wide open. It has a galley, bathroom, all the, plenty of room, facilities, eat, uh, and it is up to code. The youth center could be there and still be in the vicinity of, uh, the downtown main street. Uh, and so far as the building itself, it's clear we need to save the facade. They don't want to, we don't want larger or further, uh, blank spots on the, uh, on the, on Main Street in Austin. However, uh, if one could save the facade and then build, tear down and then build a more modern, uh, uh, frame building going, uh, uh, you know, behind that and, and reuse it, but in the interim, there may be a space available someplace else in town. Uh, I want to thank the county, uh, for having a second opinion with Lostra Engineering. Uh, just, just so we have a very clear picture of, of, uh, you know, of the damage and, and the cost of, to repair that. But you're right, I, I don't think that the county has the money. I mean, uh, if you wanted to, uh, split that up and ask the people in the community, which, uh, project is more valuable, say maintaining a park and a pool from par spending a million bucks on repairing it? The, uh, youth center as is, restored historically, brick by brick. I think there are other better places to use county money, uh, but definitely we want to save that facade. There's no question that that is a store and needs to be done. So, uh, um, you know, you have some hard decisions to make. You are, uh, you know, our county commissioners, but, uh, there are some alternatives and solutions out here. Uh, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Corey.
Thank you. I, I do want to comment on something is you guys do need to find a place for the youth center. And I don't know as though, um, you know, storing things, i- is it possible to find a place that you can actually utilize it as a youth center instead of putting everything in storage? I mean, you need that stuff for the youth of Austin. Why would you want to put it in storage for several years?
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Tim.
Tim Shot?
Yeah.
Lander County. Um, hey, I would just like to state for the record, there are not just a few kids here in Southern Lander County. There are upwards of twenty or more in Southern Lander County. They just do not attend in school. So we do have a fairly good sized youth.
So Kim.
So I want to state that for the record.
Kim, I under-
My concern on storing the gear was, uh, in, in term of, of repairing or either repairing and rebuilding that building, uh, no matter what, if it, if it's, if you do decide to spend the money to restore. uh, no matter what, if it, if it's, if you do decide to spend the money to restore it as is, you'll still have to take the gear out, and, and I'm, my point was, there are places down here that could be used to, uh, store the gear. That's all. Thank you.
Well, I think that, that you need to look for a place that you can use to set up the youth facility in the interim. Whether-
I agree.
Yeah, you just, you know, not, not just storing it, but you need to find someplace to put it so that you can still provide that service to the, the kids of Austin.
Uh, I do have a, I do have a letter from, uh, the Greater Austin Area Chamber of Commerce that I would like to read into the record, um, and, 'cause all this happened so quickly that we're just getting some out responses. But it is to the Lander County Commissioners regarding the Austin Youth Center. After review of the engineering report for the Austin Youth Center dated April twenty ninth, two thousand nineteen, the Board of Directors of the Greater Austin Area Chamber of Commerce requests a follow-up community meeting be scheduled with representatives from the county and attendants in order to convey the report's findings and the threat a building poses to the public in its current state. The Austin community is concerned with losing such a significant part of historic downtown, and the board feels it is imperative that there is a plan to save the facade and the bell and the tower of the Austin Youth Center. Please provide us with some alternative ideas to preserve our history here in Austin, regards of Robin G. Chews, the current president. Um, with that, I would like to, um, to call on our, our manager and, um, see what you have as far as information. Uh, since it is a county building and it is in a historical district, what are some of our regulations that we may have to follow? Um, with, especially with the State Historic Preservation Office.
The SHPO. So yes, I, I reviewed the letter that I received yesterday. Anna has done some follow-up on it. Uh, we did make a call to, uh-
Kristen?
Yes. Hey, Kristen.
I haven't heard back.
We haven't heard back, and I had the DA, I asked the DA, or I asked the DA to review this, this, uh, letter from Historic Preservation as well. So we haven't got an answer back from Kristen Brown of SHPO. Um, so I, I, I don't have any answers. If you would like, I would be happy to work with them on looking at, at some storage areas or some areas outside of that building for them to have their, uh, youth facilities. But they need to, to work with the county, they need to have their five oh one C three in place, and that frees up this commission to make some, some other, uh, wider, broader decisions on what we can do to, to help them out. It's not that we don't wanna help you out, uh, Dee, but we, we have certain things that we have to follow as the county as well.
Might I point out too, we now have a report from a structural engineer that says this building is basically in half triple.
And that's why I-
And that holds us up a whole can of liability.
Yes. That's why the building's closed.
The number one thing is safety, not what we're gonna do. We have to keep everybody safe.
What's the liability of storing that stuff in a county building, Ted?
Not a liability issue, it's an issue that we can't unless there are five oh one C three. Now, there is another option, the county commissioners could give them a grant, no matter what organization, if they were, if they're another nonprofit organ, five oh one C six or whatever, that you can give them money, and they can utilize that money to pay fair market value for a, uh-
Rental?
For rental.
If there is one, okay.
And that, that's the only other option. I mean, unless, everything that, that they've said, all these comments are predicated on them being a five oh one C three organization, and right now, they're not.
We could not rent it knowing that it's unsafe.
Well, knowing it's unsafe, we could, no.
I don't think there's any, any point on, on the safety issue. We've closed it down, and we'll have to make arrangements for them to get their things out, but I mean, nobody's saying we want them to use it again. I mean, it's a done deal. It's not safe. Um, so the next question is, because of a safety issue, we know that we have to take the bell tower down, does that have to be something that we, that we have to make a motion on, or because it's a building, a safety building, can the Public Works Department and, and our DA and the, the manager work together to get that down? Does that have to come before us again?
Well, you can decide right now.
No, there's no action on this item. We can't do anything. But my question is, because of the safety, how quickly can we go about taking care of a county building that's unsafe? Not the building per se, but the bell tower is the, the first thing.
We, we can definitely work together and, and, and do that, but I, I would definitely like, at some point, for the county commissioners to approve us doing it.
Well, I, I don't think there's a problem with this, to doing, I mean, the, the bell tower is a concern, 'cause it may fall on something.
No, we could start doing it right away, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
But at, I would like an approval at some point on the record.
Putting it back for us to ratify?
Just to ratify the, the actions we're taking.
Okay. Um, well, the other thing is, of course, what we're gonna do, and the fact that we can still give grants if, if we are going to try and do it, um, but I don't know if you tear down the whole thing, like I said, with SHPO, whether we can get a grant to build it back up in the same manner. Um, and I'm afraid, if you tear the whole thing and say, now we're building an old building, uh, the grants may not cover that. So we have a lot of research to do on where, so it isn't necessarily the money, per se, at this point, is what can we do? Um, they've asked for the facade. Uh, on the other hand, this facade is not the eighteen eighties facade. So the most important thing is the bell tower. That is the original. So if we save the bell tower and make sure that that safety item is taken care of as quickly as possible, then we can come back and, and give them their reading and, and see what other options are after we've checked with what we can do and where the money might come from, from some grants, and where we might be able, and if they do the five oh one C something, so that we can help them.
Five oh one C three, we can do a lot. We can do almost anything for those organs.
But even, even though they're not a five oh one C three, they still can regret, we Chris, a grant, um, for certain expenditures.
Yes, because, because you guys have local, you, you have local power to, to do certain things in the community.
So Dee, Dee, are you still there? Austin?
Say that again?
Uh, is Dee still there?
No, she left.
Okay, Michelle, um, I guess my recommendation, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, is to let her know that she really needs to diligently pursue a five oh one C three. And in the interim, we have not completed our final budget yet. There could be a possibility that if she applied for a grant before we finalize our budget, that we can provide some funding for, um, either storage or if you can find someplace else to put the facility.
Okay.
But that needs to happen ASAP.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other discussion, um, the youth center, right? We will have a meeting coming, coming up in Austin. If we want to do, um, it on the agenda, or if we just wanna do an open hearing, like, after the agenda or something with them, or the night before, whatever is your pleasure, um, but yes, most certainly.
Would be to get the bell tower down as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the bell tower is totally separate. It's a safety issue.
But we still have to have an agenda item for that, so yeah.
Yes, we can put it on for next time to ratify, and then continue with the information that we need from our county manager at SHPO and everybody. Okay, so.
So, so just to be clear, I'll get with Anna today, and we will start the process to remove the tower for safety concerns. Um, and I just wanna make it real clear that we have closed the building. Nobody can go in there, and we've changed the locks.
Yes.
So nobody's going in there. We'll get the, the tower taken care of. Um, and then I have it on the agenda, or on my notes, to bring it up at the next agenda to, uh,
Ratify.
Ratify, and then we might even have some additional information from SHPO to pass on to you from, uh, Ms. Brown.
So Keith?
And, and then to follow up with Judy's, uh, the next, in our next meeting, we'll, we're ratifying that budget.
Yeah.
So if, if Austin decides, and the youth center committee and all, that, um, they can do this and start, and we have a place to actually put the furniture, so, or whatever they wanna take out of their, their pool tables and such, um, that we can find a place for that. So that needs to be done ASAP too, um, so that they, they have-
It's not, it's not a lot of stuff. It's, it's, it's a, it would be a small area for storage. It's not like they would take up a, a whole bay at a fire station or any, it's a fairly small amount of, of-
Well, I'd still like to see them find someplace to, to continue with the, the youth center, not store it.
And, and in a discussion I had earlier in the week, um, we talked about approaching Mr. Klein of something at the, at this local school. There, there's some ideas floating around there, and, and we'll, we'll continue to work on this.
So there still is stuff from the youth center, though, in the building?
Yes.
So that will have to be coordinated to get that out.
And we, we will do that, yes.
Okay, Austin, any other comments?
No, I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to number seven, the airport discussion information regarding the two fiscal year two thousand nineteen FAA projects at the Austin Airport and the Battle Mountain Airport, presented by David Meyer, JUV engineers, and also Tom Leminger, right? And other matters properly related to it.
Okay, Tom Leminger, JUV, and Boise.
David Meyer, JUV.
Good morning, gentlemen. Um, why don't I go ahead, um, you wanna do a number eight along with it, or shall I keep that separate?
Uh, we can do seven first, and then David will jump in.
We have a little PowerPoint once we get it formed up.
Do you wanna jump into the nineteen part?
Yeah, we could. Um, I think the agenda talks about the nineteen projects. We were gonna show a few things about wrapping up the eighteen projects too, but we'll start with the nineteen while the projector's warming up.
Well, that's interesting, because we can go fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, or fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. So I guess you're included in whatever you'd like to do.
Okay, good. So as far as FY two thousand nineteen projects go, um, at Battle Mountain, I don't know if you can see this, but, um, the area of the apron at the Battle Mountain Airport in red, the western portion of the ramp, there's about eight hundred feet from here to the end of the red, um, that's in all probably going to be reconstructed. But for this year, in two thousand nineteen, we're gonna do the design for the project that I'm gonna describe. So there's about eight hundred fifty feet by about two hundred and fifty feet of pretty bad asphalt to start with. It's pretty well alligatored and blocked and cracked pretty badly. It's been on the, um, planning document for FAA for quite a while. It's FAA fundable at ninety-three point seven five percent. This year, we're doing the design for it, and in addition to the red, you can see that the, uh, the hatched area, the last ninety feet by two hundred and fifty feet. That's part of the project too, as an expansion to that ramp to the west. So that's our, uh, project for two thousand nineteen. We're most definitely going to dig down through the asphalt, which is about eight inches thick, we found out today, and, uh, do some digging, because what the FAA has allowed us to do is do, uh, asphalt in a s- a structure that is compatible with heavier aircraft that are out there for BLM, instead of just GA loading, which is pretty light, to go to a heavier section. And what that's gonna do is, it's gonna be a little bit more expensive, because it's gonna be thicker or deeper. We're gonna have to dig it out, but probably, we would've had to dig it out anyway, uh, based on, um, the shape of the asphalt that we can see from the top.
How old is that asphalt that's in there currently?
You know, I, I'm not sure, but it's, I would say it's-
It was the early nineties.
Yeah.
So the other side of that apron was redone in twenty twelve. This was phase one. So was that other side that was redone? The BLM was redone in twenty-
It's at least twenty years old.
Do you have to dig out the whole thing, or can you just mill off a portion?
Our expectation is that we'll have to dig out the whole thing. It depends on the section they find. We have geotechnical engineers out there now doing subsurface exploration. If we find, what we expect to find, which we found on the other side, is that even though there's a bunch of asphalt, there's not much rock below it, so it doesn't have a structural section that's sufficient enough, or frost protection.
The bottom, bottom line is, to get this-
The FAA requirements.
-heavier loading out there, we're gonna have to dig down.
That's-
Yeah, that's pretty much a given. So-
And that's what they did on the other side, was dig all the way down to subgrade and build it back up.
So this year's project, like I said, is to do the design. We're under contract to do that design already with you guys. Next year, hopefully next spring, early, as early as we can get in and FAA's money's available, we'd get out there and start the construction. But this year, this summer, we're gonna do the design. In fact, like David was saying, uh, the Geotech people are out there right now. We did the surveying for the project, actually, last fall before we got our contract, because the surveyors have to be out there anyway. So we went ahead and did the topographic survey for that. The, um, other thing that we're doing so far on the project is we've brought with us, to present to the FBO after this meeting and to the county eventually, once we get some ideas about how to phase the project, being that it's such a large area, there's ways of dividing it, and of course, the more you divide the project, and the more the costs go up. But we probably wanna keep the fueling available at all times out there. Again, that's up to the FBO. So one way you do that is you divide the project in half, and you let, uh, them come in to get fueled on this side and construct the other side, and then you do the vice versa step. But there's other ways of doing that, so the alternatives of how we can do that will be presented to the FBO this afternoon. So we started that process, and because we know the asphalt's gonna come out at least, we can change the tie-down configuration of all the tie-downs out there, move them in any pattern configuration that we want. So we've come up with about six different alternatives of how to do that, and how to route traffic in taxi lanes, both on the north side and the south side, and then have our tie-downs in between, or however they think, and you guys think it's best to do that. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, what we've done so far in the two thousand nineteen project at Battle Mountain. And then at Austin, the project is a design only for this year, and then build next year. Um, the access road, and there's about forty-eight hundred feet of access road from State Highway two, seven twenty-two, uh, up to, uh, the facilities at the airport themselves. And so what we're thinking in that is we'll probably do some minor leveling, just to get a nice crown in there, and then pave it. It's not real complicated, and we're finding out from the testing that was done yesterday out there, that we've got a lot of base out there, and there's fabric indeed below that base. So it's looking good for not having to dig down at all, just working it from the top.
And the, I'm sorry, I'll jump in real quick. The road was actually reconstructed in two thousand six, mid two thousands, um, with the intention of trying to pave it, but there was not money left to pave it, so the section in there is constructed well. There's two feet plus of gravel. There's, uh, fabric in between the gravel and the subgrade to keep it from pumping. I mean, it's really well done. That's what we found with the Geotech, and so, uh, that should help us just go in and clean up the top and pave right over top.
The original project FAA had on their CIP was to combine this road with a taxi lane. That is this, this portion of the taxi lane, three hundred feet from the existing end of the apron. When we got working the environmental with the environmentalist there in Phoenix and the ADO, she had to leave, um, to go take another job, and we didn't get the, the environmental completed. We were lucky to get this completed with her. So, uh, because she left, we lost the design project with this design, but the FAA at the ADO has promised us that next year, uh, we can go ahead and build them both and design this taxi lane in the winter. But we're not under contract for that yet. We're just under contract for this design.
Okay, now, the road is actually our county cost, right?
No, no, it's FAA fundable.
So, so we had, when we first started this, we only had the road out to the property line, because right about here, this line actually is the edge of the airport property. Past here is BLM. We worked with, uh, John Shervy at the BLM, he was a huge help. Kyla Bright was a huge help. Um, we were able to find that the road through the BLM actually has an established right-of-way, twenty-four feet wide. We were able to secure the right-of-way, provide it to the FAA, update our master plan documents, and now, because Lander County owns that road all the way to the highway district, uh, right-of-way, that road is now all eligible, all FAA-eligible.
Yeah, we had to, we had to kinda hassle with them over that. They were not gonna make us go past the property line. In fact, when I was here the last time, I didn't think we could get it, but then we found out through their own ACs that if it, there is an easement in here, they'd allow it, so we found the easement, and that worked, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's, uh, we've started, as I said, yesterday, the testing is all done. We've got all done yesterday for both the taxi lane and, uh, the roadway, and the survey, uh, got completed. And the survey, uh, got completed yesterday as, as well. So we're moving quite, uh, forward with the project. And, and again, next summer, uh, hopefully, and been promised by the FAA, we can build them both. So that's.
The intent was to build them both, so that we have one contractor come out. We don't have to mobilize multiple contractors. Especially for that taxi lane, three hundred feet, four hundred feet, just, you're going to pay a premium to get someone out there. The idea is build them together, keep our costs down. And so that, that's still the plan moving forward.
So we wanted to talk a little bit about the projects we've just wrapped up too, so you guys can get some, um, kind of picturesque view of what we've done out there. Because some of these projects we've just wrapped up, the paperwork wise, starting with the hangar facilities that we built out there. This first slide, you're going to be looking at the inside of the building. You're going to be looking at one half of two buildings that were built. Uh, each building was forty by ninety feet, and each building was thirty-six hundred feet swirfy in size. Each building had two, uh, bifold doors. And you can see on the right side of the slide, one of the bifold doors, electric, uh, operated, uh, insulated four inches in that door. And in fact, the whole building is insulated four inches around. It's a steel building, obviously, and steel skin. And those kinds of buildings are designed for long life and low maintenance, uh, as well. So you got to, a total of four bifold doors. You got space for four airplanes at least. At least you got four doors. And we, uh, built with that, uh, the access taxi lane that's four hundred and twenty-five feet long. You can get a good view of it looking north.
Excuse me, Tom?
What's that?
I'm sorry, uh, just for the record, how much was each building?
How much? Dollars?
Yeah.
The entire project was with the grading that I'm fixing to describe and the buildings was about eight hundred thousand.
The building was about three hundred and twenty-five thousand for each two units. That was the item cost, plus there was some site costs to add you up to the eight hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Um, so the entry from each of the door ties into this taxi lane, which is built in gravel, which is eight inches thick. And it comes kind of at you here in the picture. An airplane would come taxiing towards you and then, uh, enter the ramp on the ramps, existing ramps, northwest corner. And also part of the project in the side grading were ditches, pipes, and the detention ponds. We have to detain water, uh, from its historical amount. Uh, after the buildings and the taxiways are built, we have to hold that kind of, that run, that kind of runoff. Uh, so the hangars were completed back, as far as the hangar buildings, back in mid-December. And then the grading, uh, the taxi lanes was done last. And it was done at the beginning of the year. And the project was closed out in, uh, mid-January, as far as the paperwork goes.
And Anna Penola was a huge help on that. Make sure that's on the record.
The next project that we just completed, uh, is the avgas unit at Battle Mountain, um, which is a five thousand gallon, double-walled, above-ground, fire-protected type of structure, state-of-the-art card reader. And then the picture on the left side, it's kind of out of focus, but the, uh, the card reader is open right now. And, uh, so that's not the way it looks when it's closed, obviously. And the dispenser, you can see under the over, overhang. And the project included the pad and the, uh, foundation, the communication that came, uh, front, to the unit from the FBO, actually, uh, through the cloud. And, uh, then the utilities that, uh, bring power into the unit. Um, and so that project was completed on December twentieth. There were no change orders on it. Um, and, um, we just finished out the closeout documents, paid the contractor out, because we were waiting on the fire marshal to come out and do his inspection. And that was done about a week and a half ago. And, uh, done very successfully. And thanks for, uh, Anna for meeting with those people out there too, on that. The last thing I want to talk about, about, uh, Battle Mountain is what we put in for, and, and a whole lot hasn't really been done by the FAA since the last time we met on this. Um, which is the supplemental appropriations, uh, application that we put in for a hundred percent type FAA work, which is a national deal. It was, it started out being for, uh, small communities with small populations. Um, and we thought Lander County would be a perfect candidate for that. So back in October third, we put in an application for an expansion of the ramp to the, to the east, some, uh, two hundred and fifty to three hundred feet and two hundred and fifty feet, uh, tall. And at the same depth, kind of for capacity of the bigger aircraft to help B L M and their space problems that they have out there. We haven't heard anything from the FAA other than some kind of negative things about, um, you know, they had so much money set aside. They got about thirty times the amount of application dollars than they had available. So they kind of threw in a lot of different kind of airports as being eligible for this kind of money there at the last minute. And everybody jumped in and put in their stuff. So even though we put in and, um, everybody's kind of waiting, uh, for any word from the FAA. No word has been given out. And every time you ask the airport district office down in Phoenix, they tell you, quit asking, because everybody's asking.
All the district offices?
Yeah, same thing. It's a national thing. It's gone to national. And I think part of the problem is there's been so much money involved in the applications.
And on that eligibility, there's six airports in Nevada, the state of Nevada, that are eligible. They gave a list of eligible ones that were meeting the criteria. It's either a rural G A Airport, general aviation, or a, or a smaller hub commercial. There were six airports in Nevada that were eligible, and Austin and Battle were two of the six. So.
So the next project I wanted to talk about, and it's shifting over to, to Austin again, uh, the completed projects. First, the master plan. I know you guys have got your plans. They're, they've been signed by the FAA and approved. Um, I think everybody liked what they saw in the plan, the twenty-year plan that was, uh, given with it. But we just closed it out as far as the financial documentation and the final report were just done. So that was just done the last couple of weeks. So that one's a dead project now. It's completed, once and for all, completed project. Um, and then the, uh, last thing that we wanted to talk about is the installation of the second tank out at Austin that I know Patsy's very involved with. Um, and in the slide here, you can see the new tank is on the right. The, uh, about two-year-old tank, uh, the original tank is on the left. So the whole idea was to get J A, Jet A fuel out there. And so we did a little switch because the, uh, pump on the existing tank was way strong and strong enough to drive the Jet A situation. We used and did a little conversion, uh, and made the existing tank the new Jet A tank. And the new tank, um, was, uh, converted to avgas. So again, it's a five thousand gallon, double-wall, fire-protected, uh, tank. We added on to the structure underneath to, to expand it. We're sharing the card reader. Um, and, uh, the original, well, the tank on the right, the new tank was completed in late December. We had a little conversion difficulty because one of the filters in the existing tank that the, uh, contractor who built it and the supplier that was involved said it would be in there and it got opened up and it wasn't there. So we had to order a certain part and that delayed the conversion of, uh, Jet A fuel into the Jet A tank until December nineteenth, uh, of last year. So again, we kind of waited on paying off the contractor as long as we could so that the fire marshal inspection, if he found something, we could get the guy back out there. But I guess it was a very benign inspection. So we just finished paying him off here about a month ago. So that's all that we have as far as projects goes, including the new ones and the existing.
All, all exciting. Number eight, discussion and information regarding highlights from the two thousand nineteen Nevada Airport Association Nevada A A E Conference. Presented by David Meyer, J U V Engineers Incorporated, and Tom Leminger, and all other matters properly related there too. So, um, some good stuff.
Yeah, so I attended the Nevada Airport Association Conference in Mendon, Mendon in March. Um, it was a two-day conference. So I wanted to cover a couple of cool things that came up. The biggest one is the Aviation Trust Fund. So the Aviation Trust Fund is money that's allocated specifically from the state of Nevada to provide help in the local match for FAA grant money. So FAA grants are written such that the FAA provides ninety-three point seven five percent of funding. And then the locals provide six and a quarter to round it out to a hundred. So the Aviation Trust Fund is managed by the N dot Aviation folks. Kurt Houkell is the state man, Aviation Manager there. And I believe it came to be in two thousand five. Uh, and up to this year, every year, they've set aside a hundred thousand dollars for the entire state of Nevada to help with funding, um, you know, which certainly helps. Uh, they've still had issues with some smaller air, uh, smaller owners, counties being able to make the rest of their match. And so the state has now pushed for, in the next two-year cycle, because it's, uh, updated on a two-year basis, they are going for five hundred thousand a year into that fund, um, which would be a big increase. And long-term, the goal is to get it to a million dollars a year into that fund. I stole this table right from Kurt Houkell. That million dollars comes from their analysis of the last four years of local match needed throughout the state. Um, as you can see, in a typical year, a million dollars would just about take care of all of the local matches on all the FAA funding, uh, which would be really helpful. So the state of Nevada would, uh, contribute to the local match and the counties and owners, airport owners would be left with very little to pick up. So Kurt Houkell with, uh, the Aviation Manager is pushing very hard on this. This is something he really believes in, so. Uh, that was a big, uh, a big deal, so I wanted to pass that along. One of the other big, uh, things to come out of there is they're moving the conference next year to Tonopah, which is, uh, good news. They've had it in Mendon for the last four years, I believe, at the Carson Valley Inn. Uh, it seemed like they were just going to keep it there. They got a good deal and were happy. But there's been some cry to outcry to move it around, so it'll be in Tonopah next year. I mentioned to the folks at N V, N V A A, they may want to talk with Kurt, with the state. He knows a little bit of everyone throughout the state. And then I followed up with him and he said, I would love to have it in Austin or Battle Mountain. So you may be getting a call from him at some point to work out the logistics down the road. I think that would be a really good, really good thing to get people out here, you know, airport people seeing the airport. That's always a good thing.
It would be wonderful if we have enough housing.
Yeah, that would be the big thing. So, um, the other big item is the Nevada Business Aviation Association, N V B A A. Have taken on kind of a bigger role with the N V A A, uh, to kind of work together, to bring the airports in the state together. Provide more of a lobbying basis for the, uh, for the airports and the aviation community. Um, so those were the big updates. Um, a couple of resources I'll go through quickly. Um, this A N T and Digicast, so this, these are training videos. And I apologize, I know it's hard to, to really read anything on that screen grab. But this is a series of training videos that, um, they have, uh, that is put on by triple A E, which is the administration wing of the airports association. And so you can see they have videos on administration, uh, air, uh, airfield, uh, rescue and firefighting, environmental, ops and maintenance. The cool thing about this is, this is included in a membership with N V A A, which we're members with. So if anybody's interested in looking into any of these videos, we'd be happy to give them a run-through. This could be helpful for, uh, public works people who may need to be out on the airfield. Uh, Lander County's pretty blessed at both their airports with really, uh, knowledgeable people that work there day-to-day. But as you get more people, these could be helpful training videos. And then I just have a quick slide. On the N V A A website, there's a lot of resources here for reaching out to other airports. There's pub, uh, professional forums, member directories, news, events. If you have airport events, this would be a good place to try to get the word out or updates on the airports. This would be a good resource. Uh, and then on the cheat sheet, I listed a couple of contacts that if you guys have any questions or airport-related discussions, these are great people to reach out to. So I just wanted to give back a little report and answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Any public comment?
I just want to let the commission know that we have received some of that grant funding in the past, last year and the year before. Kurt's been real good about it, working with us, getting some of that, uh, money for your works.
And we got it on the master plan and the other Austin grant is closed out, so.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate your time to keep us updated on this. And, um, we wish you safe travels.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Moving on to public works, number nine, discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove. A change order request in the amount of seven hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and eight cents for the Austin State Route two thousand, two thousand, two twelve, two fourteen, and two fifty, road rehab. It's the two eighteen, two thousand and eighteen project. It's bringing the amount to four million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and eight cents. And all of the matters properly related there too. Mr. Remus.
Bert Remus for the record. Um, so with this project, we have budgeted seven point six million. And this right here would tie a piece of road together to the, was, um, ground up in the past, between two sections. So it's about a mile of road that was ground up between two sections of road. So it'd make it paved all the way through. And it would also extend one piece of road down to service another home. It would be the last home on the, it's about a thousand feet to service the last home out there on, um, the Farm District Road.
But we're still under budget.
Well, well, under budget.
We'll do it.
So what, kind of a stupid question, where, why is there a ground-up piece of road in between?
It was ground up.
Originally to do this project. It wasn't like that originally.
So, uh, in doing the project, we thought these numbers would come in considerably higher. Obviously, that's why we budgeted so much. And that section was ground up years and years ago. So when, uh, Jerry Utter was the boss down there in Austin, this is thirty-five years ago, they were paving a mile a year with cold mix. Didn't hold up, so they just ground that out and left it out. And then when we went and chip sealed seven years ago, we chip sealed all of the pavement that was there and it got us through to now. And so in this, I didn't put that section of road, because I didn't think we'd have the money with the mow all the way down there and everything else that comes with it. So by having the money, and also I'd like to point out that this, out of the seven hundred and forty-four thousand we have here, the, uh, a hundred thousand of that is for the Austin Road and Bridgeyard, which is a, a separate budgeted money item. But they're going to hold this price, the square footage price for us, to pave that as well.
Two separate projects.
Two separate projects, but we're just going to include it in this one so we can keep that square footage price. So we don't have to mow down there for a small project and, and skyrocket the square footage price.
I'll make note that we approved the change order in the amount of seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, seven hundred and forty-four and nine hundred and four dollars and eight cents for the Austin State Route two-one-two, two-one-four, and two-one-five, road rehab, twenty-eight eighteen project. And bringing the amount to four million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and eight cents.
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian. Made the notion that we approved that change order. And Kathy, second, any other discussion?
I do have a comment. Um, with paving the county yard, that is a separate project. And you budgeted a hundred thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Um, can we legally do that? Because.
It, it's commonly done.
Yeah, that's.
Well.
It's common practice in the state of Nevada.
We don't have to use, so, we don't have to use that money out of that project line item to say that's the hundred thousand. Because what happens is that hundred thousand goes back into the general fund. And we don't use that money out of there. We use the money out of the seven point six million, and we cover that project within it.
Okay, because, I mean, I can, I can understand, you know, the addition of the roads for, for, um, the change order and adding and whatnot. It's just, I, I just wanted to make sure that, because it is over fifty thousand, that it would not be something that we would actually have to put out for rebid legally.
No, because it's within, within the seven point six. So we're using that money instead of that hundred thousand. So that hundred thousand would just fall back into the general fund. We won't use that project.
No, I understand that. I just, like I said, it's, it's really not related in, in some respects. I just wanted to make sure clarification-wise that, um, we're not going to get in trouble, um, by not bidding that.
Yeah, so it's, the scope of work hasn't changed. It's still paving. So the square footage price has already been bid for paving down there. And that's what, that's what the contractor's board will look at, is if you've changed the scope of work, not so much where you put it, as long as it's a bid straight up. So if it's paving, it relates to paving. Now, if we went and we did a full road rehab or something like that down there that changes the scope of work entirely, then the contractor's board would have an issue.
So we could actually, anytime you get a square footage bid like that, we can turn around and do the same thing in another area or.
or several areas under budget and while they're out there.
And we have done that. We have done that a few times.
Okay, I see the concern because we thought it was a separate project because we put it aside that way in the budget, so. Gotcha. I think we're all clear. Okay, um, any public comment? Okay, Brian made the motion. Kathy seconded it. Outlaws in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Number ten, discussion of possible action to approve or disapprove, Public Works Department to install an in-memory of bench at Elquis Park for Deborah J. Higley Jeffers, paid for by Rob Jeffers and all other matters properly related there, too.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Jeffers contacted me. He previously lived here. His wife passed away. Um, like to have his wife's, uh, bench put out here in one of our parks with an in-memory of. I believe it should be in your packet of some pictures of, of the bench. And he said he'd pay for all costs. So the, um, county to install, we wouldn't have to install it if you wanted to have a contractor install it. Or if you guys don't want it in there at all, um, entirely up to you guys.
Is, he doesn't live in our area anymore?
No, he lives, I believe he said in Colorado. And now, don't quote me on that, but he's not, he's not mistaken.
It's out, out of the area, okay. Um, yeah, I did have, my first concern that came up was, have we had any prior requests for a memory bench? And I wanted us to check to see if we've denied anybody.
No, we had Baldini's, uh, in Lions Club Park, right? There wasn't a Baldini in Lions Club Park for years. Is it still in that park? Yeah, so.
Elquis Park is dedicated to some people that died from that matter. I think it's appropriate.
Okay, so the next question is then if we, if we do this, we certainly, um, haven't done it for a while. So we, we might get further requests and we have to know that the other families may want to do something. Do you want to keep them kind of in one area or is it okay spread throughout the counties or what's, what's your concern and pleasure?
I would think that possibly spreading them throughout the, the parks because, or even throughout the county, whatever's reasonable, because, I mean, you don't want to get too many benches. We're starting a precedence here.
Yes, we are.
And so I think probably now we're gonna get a lot more requests and you're kind of gonna be losing a lot of your park space. So we have to be careful about not getting too many in each park. Um, so do we want to set a limit per park based on size?
I have an idea. What if, rather than placing a bench, if we built some sort of just a rock or stone monument that we could place plaques on? And then you're not taking up real estate when somebody would like to do something like that. Just a thought.
Interesting thought.
Or we could replace benches that are currently in the park with these benches. I mean, it, um, and not to exceed what we currently have. However you guys want to do it, I just thought that this is something that should sit here.
No, we're, we're starting a precedent because it started thirty years ago when Mr. Baldini's bench was put in. So it's not something new.
Right.
Well, his isn't a bench. It's a plaque. Isn't, isn't it a, does he have a bench?
He's got a bench.
Isn't?
It's a huge bench. It's a beautiful bench.
Because I've seen that.
No, it's a bench over in Lions Club Park because he was a lion.
Yeah, but I mean, I've seen, isn't there also a, like a little statue thing, not statue, but a, a block with a plaque on it? Anyway, um, okay, so the bench shown. How does that compare with the benches we have in the park now?
It's real similar. Same, same metal with that plastic kind of rubber coating, same.
Okay, so the benches we have in the park now are relatively new.
Mm-hmm.
And if we replaced them with one, what would we do with the county's bench?
Oh, we have other, we have other old ones in other parks that, that definitely.
You have a place for them?
Yeah, the, the Lions Club Park across the tracks, we, we definitely need a couple of new benches in there.
Is the size the same?
Of the.
The size of benches?
Oh, I don't know that. I don't know if they're the same or not. From the picture that I see there, it, it looks similar, but I, I couldn't tell you if they're exactly the same. And that comes with a different, you can see that there's a concrete footing that's poured under that one. Um, when we install these benches, we pour little footers directly underneath them as opposed to a pad out in front of them. So it's, it's, it's similar. I don't think it's gonna be.
Well, it says that it would be a six-by-four foot pad. So it looks like the bench is almost six foot.
Well, I think the biggest concern is, is what the commissioners have, have certainly identified and that's, um, we're working with the future and we should be taking the time to look at the vision of how this is going to affect us down the road with how many, if indeed we ended up with, you know, over a period of time, twenty-five, thirty benches that are memorials, we may have to change it to a memorial park rather than a county park. I mean, I, I, I know we have to look at this.
I have a thought on that, but that's for later date. Um, maybe, I don't know, um, going with a little bit of a conservation route is have them by a tree and we can put a plaque by a tree. Um, you know, building something for the future in the parks for, you know.
So I think his request was just for the bench. I don't know.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I know, I know that and, 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 but that's just it. Is this if we say, yeah, we're gonna let him have a bench. Like Patsy said, pretty soon we're gonna have twenty-five, fifty people that want to put a bench in the park and.
I think that if you look at it in a smaller view, that if this can replace a bench and when they put their requests in, if at the time they understand if we need a bench replaced, we could utilize theirs. If not, it can't be done. It, it's a simpler problem. It solves.
I think that's a good idea.
We could use more seating in the park, that's for sure.
And I'll look for the record. Bitches that are in Elquis Park now are on the outside of the park. They're not taken up in the middle of the park or taken up area. They're on the outside by the trees. And there's a domestic violence bench there. I just saw this far from here.
I think Kathy's got a very valid suggestion.
I mean, if we need them replaced, that we replace them at that time and they can be put on a waiting list until one needs to be replaced. And then it's not, and I don't see where everybody's gonna jump in and say, I mean, these benches have been there for years. They weren't like Baldini's. And if everybody was gonna jump in and say they wanted a bench, that issue would have come before, you know, prior commissions. But I just think that it's a hit and miss when that happens.
Yeah, I don't think.
I'll open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on it? Well, I like the idea of setting some direction now. Um, I think we should do that.
I'll make a motion.
If you like the idea of, of something living and breathing with the memorial plaque. Um, I know other people have given memorials in, in the Austin area and, uh, although we don't always have, um, a good plaque, but.
Oh, it was their idea though, for their family. This is their.
Stuff. Um, but living things are always wonderful and useful, so.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the request to put the bench somewhere around the perimeter of the Elquis Park.
I'll second it.
Okay.
And, and, um, what's the guy's name? Mr. Jeffers?
Jeffers.
Will pay for it one hundred percent. So however you need to work that out, figure out the price, send him the bill, you get the money and proceed.
I'll let him organize it with a contractor and then we'll just make sure we set the location.
Okay, any further discussion? Any conditions or anything? Yep?
I really honestly, like I mentioned before, I think that, that Kathy really had a very good point is to replace existing benches. Instead of just adding benches willy-nilly is to replace what's there that is not already a dedicated bench.
Well, honestly, I think if you look at it like Art stated, we definitely could use more seating in our parks and I don't think it's going to be a, I don't think we're just gonna be overwhelmed, hey, I'd like to put a bench. I don't think that's gonna be the case. But, I mean, if it does, we could always look at it at that point in time, could you not? You're setting something, okay.
Even though we've set a precedent?
Precedent was set thirty years ago.
Thirty years ago.
That's what I'm saying. Hasn't been a problem from that point to this point, so.
Yeah, but they always haven't been with citizens. They have been with, um, important, uh, people that have served in different, uh, different, uh, boards and commissioners and stuff here, right?
But that wasn't distinguished at the time.
Okay.
I mean.
Then, then we're fine. Legally, we're fine.
Deborah Higley grew up here. She was from here.
Okay.
I don't know about Mr. Jeffers, but I know she was.
Well, and, and Patty's right that, you know, Mr. Baldini's Park, he was part of the Lions and when they developed that, I'm sure he was instrumental in, in helping to build that park.
He was.
And, and, you know, we have Bellisdege Park.
Yeah.
Um, and, and I don't know where the Elquis, I mean, family, how that came in, in whatnot, but, you know, these are all people that were very involved in the community and, and building these things.
I would suggest if you want an ongoing policy that, that we put this back, that you decide today whether you're going to allow this bench. Then we, we take this up on a later commission meeting and we can agenda it properly for a policy decision on future honorariums.
Well, we can leave it for another commission agenda.
Or that.
Or another board. Okay, the motion has been by Art, but that we do approve this, um, for Mrs. Jeffers. And it was seconded by Brian. So any other discussion or public comment? Yes, councilor.
Hi, Ford Jerome. I've listened to the discussion and I think there were some valid points raised. But with respect to the item that's on the agenda, I knew this lady. She grew up here. They were longtime residents here. She's passed away. Her husband wants to do something in her memory and he's willing to flip the bill. Give the guy his bench now.
Thank you.
Thank you, hi.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Okay, so we are now to number eleven with the update and information regarding the Public Works Department presented by Bureau of Remus.
Okay, so.
Lander County Public Works Director and all of the matters properly related there, too.
Sorry, Miss Patty.
You're on.
All right, a few things. So I've been busy, missed you guys' last meeting. Um, we have a lot of jobs going on. We're about seventy-five percent finished with one going on in Austin right now. We're waiting on that change order so we can keep ticking down there. White knife's going really well. But I did some research on, uh, septic density and testing and here's a list of people that I've contacted and kind of some information that I have, but it's like an opening Pandora's box here. Um, I contacted NDP, multiple offices there, talking to multiple people, um, Department of Public Health, City of Perump, City of Washoe County, State Health, and Bureau of Safe Drinking Water. And is what I found out is there's really no set testing on how they test. And the reason that, um, Washoe County went to the municipal system is because they had high groundwater and it started pushing raw sewage out onto the street. Um, at that point, they created a GID district, which is a general improvement district. And anybody who lived within that district, their rates went up to pay for the improvements of the new sewer system that came in, which, which I guess were pretty substantial. Um, but I don't have, they don't have really any set standards for how you test, who's responsible for testing, where you test. It's kind of, they, the moral of the story is they leave it up to the, to the deciding body, which is the commission of that county, and they try to keep it within the state's limits of ninety-nine per, per square mile. Uh, I'm waiting for some emails to come through, so I'll bring that back to you guys. And hopefully we can have some more discussion on it with, with a few commissioners here outside of, outside of the meeting to kind of everybody get their minds around it, so it's not just me sitting here relaying the message. It can be, you guys can hear it from when we get the right people together because these, it, everybody's sending you to a different office. They don't really know. They, you'd think that the state would have record of where they failed at, if they've had dissolved solids or if it's just high nitrates or what, what's going on with these things. And they, they don't have one spot you can go to and just get it.
But we do know that septics have failed below the ninety-nine per square mile.
We, we do know many, yes, but they, but we don't know that it has contaminated the groundwater per se. We know that there's, the septics have failed.
We know that in Perump.
Yes. Now, getting that information out of them or getting somebody to put that in writing is a whole nother thing.
Yeah.
Um, so that's just kind of a general on, on that. I'll, I'll keep working forward with it and, and try to bring something because I don't, I don't want to put anybody in the community. I don't want to stop any developers from developing. And I don't want to, you know, put the county in a spot where we have to later run sewer, I mean, just pull sewer out to places and it's a, and it's a huge cost burden to the county. Or start a GID district here and be, you know, a big burden on anybody living in, in the areas that we like developing. So, and then, um, I wanted to touch on some cost savings.
So on that, can I make a comment on that?
You bet.
So I had also sent some emails to Division, Division of Environmental to try to find out if there was these huge failures or huge, small, any, any's right. Um, and I haven't received anything back of failures. And so I asked about Perump and they said, well, Perump was an anomaly all in itself because it had no infrastructure whatsoever. So they started all these septics and all of these, and there was no, if, they did absolutely no infrastructure. And so that's why they were having i- issues with failures and things like that. So there, they were taken out, aside and put, um, out of the norm because of not only did they end up draining their water, um, in that area and causing fissures to break open and homes and bu- buildings to sink, but they had no infrastructure for their water and sewer. So they, all the way around, unfortunately, Perump was, had issues aside from the state because the state also, I've sent out many emails, um, from the Department of Environmental to see if there was fails, um, huge failures within the state of Nevada and I'm not, they're not getting any, um, information back either on that.
Well, it's a nine-county, the only county that doesn't have building codes either, right?
Eureka County doesn't.
They don't have building codes either.
Well, they don't have building inspectors, so.
Yeah, right. I mean, they have more than just the water structure that we're.
So they're going back trying from the drawing board with, um, Perump and trying to figure out their issues, um, now and how to fix them, so.
I think, um, one of the interesting things, though, um, is it's almost apples to oranges in respects of you're looking at septics that are failing in Perump. Um, you know, what's causing them to fail is, is it the, the ground itself? Are you not getting proper leaching? Um, you've got a whole different, um, geology in Perump than you do inland of county. So trying to kind of compare them, I don't know if there really is much of a comparison there.
Well, I guess the only comparison is the fact that the state doesn't, they have ninety-nine septic per square mile regardless if you're in Perump or.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, uh, yeah, that's, but if, if they're failing, doesn't mean we're gonna fail ninety-nine.
So, uh, moving on, the, uh, I went and walked through the water treatment plant out there in Crescent Valley. And is what I found out is they're treating about three hundred gallons of water a minute down to zero arsenic. It cost them roughly a couple of million dollars to install the treatment plant. It's, it's really small. It costs them, they're down to fifty thousand dollars every six to eight years to replace the medium in the, in the tanks that treat the water. Um, insanely effective for what, what you can do. And, and it's where I'm going with this is we have, we have a well in town that is really high in arsenic, but it's a big producer. It would be cheaper to put one of these treatment plants right there at the well, treat it, and you could mix it, have the same plant there and, and at the mix, we could, we could treat about eight hundred gallons a minute. And every six to eight years, be a fixed thousand dollars into the medium.
What's it, what's the cost for the small?
For, for the plant is, is two million dollars, just over two millions, what Eureka County paid for it. So I was really surprised. It's, it's in, it's worth, if, if any of you guys have time and would like to drive out there and check it out, I would like to show you because it might be the cheapest investment we can to protect the county. The way we stand right now, you're supposed to, by the state standard, you're supposed to be able to operate with your biggest producing well out of operation during peak hours and peak point of the year, which is middle of the summer. And we couldn't, we couldn't come close to touching that right now. If, if well number nine out in the valley went out, we would limp by with well six, which is our high arsenic and the state's allowing us to use it right now. Not saying they will forever. Um, it's a fifteen parts per million to eighteen parts per million and, and you're supposed to be below ten. and, and you're supposed to be below ten. So if, if that went, if something went there, we, we couldn't keep the town in water, is what I'm saying. Now with, with well six treating that, we could keep ourselves in water. It might be something that we consider investing in maybe next budget year. That's worth looking at.
If we didn't have those wells south of town, all the wa- the wells in town, six, I think three, I don't know what the other ones, what is our gallons per minute that would be coming out of those? Do you know?
You, you could, you could probably pull four thousand gallons a minute out of them pretty easily.
Okay.
They're, they're big producers.
I'm just trying to get a little idea here of, uh.
Now, mind you, we've taken, um, well, three off and it, it's servicing the, the parks and, you know, it's what, we're, we're doing some, some alternate water effort. And four is a truck fill. So we've saved millions of gallons by doing the truck fill and watering the parks and ball fields and all that with the, with that high arsenic water.
No, I guess just my point being is we have three wells that are not necessarily the most dependable wells in the county at a cost of over fifteen some million dollars. And now we still want to talk about putting an arsenic treatment plan in. And I'm not saying I'm imposed to it, it's just reality is the decision to put that, those wells out there was not a fiscally responsible decision.
And hindsight's always twenty-twenty.
Exactly.
Pick a time next week and give me a call, I'll go out with you.
Okay, awesome, the operator out there, you know, we got Operator of the Year for the state, he's a great water system operator, he's super knowledgeable. Good guy to talk to, um, I've toured the Indians arsenic treatment plant, it's not anywhere near as effective or operator friendly as this, this is pretty, when you walk in the room, you, you'll be shocked at how, how little there really is there. So moving on, I'm gonna touch on some construction, uh, cost savings. Out here at the, on the, the white knife for the water main loop that we're doing, we have twenty thousand dollars in, uh, in savings that we, and, and we'll have a, a bunch more, but I didn't want to include until we're done with the final budget first. And that'll be around middle of August when we completely close that job out. But that's just in, um, surveying and design that we've saved that twenty thousand, hopefully we'll have a bunch more to come with that. And then another thing that I, I really want to make sure I point on here is the cost savings for the Austin Road rehab and that's, um, huge deal to Marty Ugalde in day engineering because this guy sends me emails at one, two, three in the morning. I had to shut my phone off from getting his emails at that time because he'd wake me up with, with a ding and then show up out here at nine o'clock and be walking through a job with me the same, same day. And he's saved us over two hundred thousand dollars in, um, design and surveying. And there's, there's, looks like there's gonna be a little bit more to come. He, he really just knocked these jobs out of the park and, and it's, it's a true testament of the work the guy does. It's, it's, can't say enough, I wish he was here. And then on another one, so I have, uh, on our inspection services, we used to get a flat five percent rate from our engineer, they, of whatever the job was and if you added change order to it, then you got, they took five percent of that and that's materials and everything else included. Well, I took that away and we went with a local and I know that it's caused some stir because my sister is involved and this is a small community, I have nothing to hide from anybody. But my sister and Nettie are dating, everybody knows that or I'm not sure what they are, but, um, yeah, how do you say that?
Nepotism.
So, so anyway, um, and I've always went with local business. It's been something that I've done since I got hired in Austin, my brother-in-law ran the NAPL, we always did business with them, we'd get fair pricing. And so I know that it's caused some concern a- amongst especially one commissioner. So I wanted to point out some cost savings on the project since they've been with us. We've saved eighty-eight thousand seventy-six dollars and that's over five projects, but that's not including, if we, if we went and we included the, uh, the change orders and other things, you, you're talking another seventy-five thousand dollars. So we would have saved a hundred and sixty-three thousand seventy-six dollars so far in five projects with them. And this is money we can put somewhere else. So it's, it's responsible, uh, and we can't bid it because it's professional services. So I've had to walk down this tightrope and I'm trying to do everything as fair. Keith wants to be the one that signs all them things and I, I don't feel that, I don't want anybody to think that I'm hiding behind Keith. I'll come here in a public meeting in front of the whole world and justify why I'm doing what I'm doing to anybody for the better of the county. It's not any sort of relative, friend, family, everybody knows each other in this town. We all work with each other whether we like each other or not, there are many people that probably don't like, care for me much, but still work with me. So that, that there.
There's no violation there.
No, no, but I, I wanna, I just want to point that out and, and I think it is substantial, you know, that we're, we're supporting local business and saving the county money, I think that's important. Another thing that, that got brought to my attention, there's a hundred and seventy-six working days for, for a four-day-a-week county employee here and that's not including your vacation days, that's with your sixteen paid holidays. That breaks down to, uh, one thousand seven, or one thousand six hundred and seventy hours per year time and three years I went in my phone and I did this, these phones are pretty cool because they'll show you how much you've talked on them, give you the minutes, the days, everything. So I broke this down and is what, since two thousand and sixteen is when I had, got this phone, I have, uh, been on an average of working days, five point oh five hours, that doesn't include text messages, that doesn't include emails or anything else. So, and the reason that this is important and I want to point this out is because, and I hate to do this in a public meeting, but I, but I've been brought to the point where I think that what's done in the dark will be brought to the light everywhere at some point in life and I'm just gonna start doing these things in public meetings, so it's out here for everybody to see. People call Ms. Allen, Commissioner Allen, and, uh, and I, and she tells them I don't answer my phone. I don't return phone calls and then I'm a liar, that our assistant district attorney does things illegally covering up for me. I'll tell you right now, if you call this phone, if you leave a voicemail, I've always got back to them. If you send me a text message, I will always get back to you. If you call this phone and I don't answer and you don't leave a voicemail or you don't send a text message, you won't hear back from me. Not unless I'm somewhere in service where I can see your name showed up on my phone, then I'll call you back and say, hey, what's going on? But I'm on this thing full-time every day and I, and I don't do it discriminatively towards anybody. I don't care who you are in this county, whether I like you or not, I will always answer it or return your text or call if, if you leave a message. So from here forward, I'm just gonna point them things out because I don't appreciate being called a liar nor do I appreciate being told that I won't answer my phone by people in the community that come to me and say, hey, I just wanted to let you know this is what's being told to me. It's unprofessional, it's something I wouldn't do to you, no matter what I think about it because of a professional standard that should be set by all of us that are in this room. So I, I'm just putting that out there, um, you know, if you want to address me on any of that, I'd love to do it in an open meeting.
Called transparency, Bert.
So, and that, that's, and I, and I apologize to you commissioners for this because I, I don't want this to come this for any of us. I know, I try to keep this, these chambers as professional as possible. And, and with that, that's kind of my update, I don't have much more to add to.
I have a question regarding White Knight. Is when the budget was approved, you presented to the commission that the colony was going to pay twenty-seven percent?
Yeah, eight hundred and something thousand, I believe.
Eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Is that still?
That is still standing, yes.
Standing, thank you.
At the time of their connection, they pay the full amount. Correct.
Do we have any other questions for our Public Works Director? Thank you for the update, the rest is noted for the record.
Thanks, Bert.
Okay, moving on, our last, uh, agenda item is correspondence, number twelve, correspondence reports, potential upcoming agenda items. Anything we haven't discussed?
The Nevada Day thing probably need to be put back on there, correct?
Yeah, I think he has.
For updates.
Yeah, there's a few things, okay, nothing new? Okay, moving into public comment, the non-agenda items, I know only questions are invited to submit comments in writing and or candidly comments on any non-agenda item at the board meeting, if any. A discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Any public comments? Councilor.
Hi, Ford Jerome. I have served this community as district attorney and as deputy district attorney for more years than I want to recollect at this point in time. I have always tried to do so ethically and honorably. I don't appreciate my professional ethics being questioned by anyone, whether commissioner or not. I have always maintained an open office policy for anyone in the county to come in and talk to me about any concerns that they have. And I stress that again to you as county commissioners. If you have any questions about what I am doing, either for the county or otherwise, please come to my office and talk to me about it. Don't spread biased, filthy rumors. Thank you.
Thanks, Holly.
Thank you.
So noted for the record, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, um, before we adjourn, just a reminder, um, we'll be having a closed session here. Okay, so we'll take a couple of minutes and then come back for a closed session. Motion?
Uh, motion, Chair.
Motion to close?
Motion by Brian to adjourn, seconded by Judy Allen.